Sergeant Arms, lobby is clear, thank you. We request that all electronic devices be turned off or put in silent mode. Also, please refrain from using flash photography, except during the special presentations portion of the meeting. I am pleased to welcome you to the August 8th, 2023 School Board Meeting. The time is 6:01 PM, and this meeting is called to order. We would like to take this opportunity to remind the members of the public of the district's mission, which is to ensure that each student achieves his or her highest personal potential and the district's vision to be a world-class school system. This evening's agenda includes a moment of silence, the pledge of allegiance, acknowledgement, public comment, consent action items, which include: one item under Board Office, three items under Academic Services, one item under Business Services, two items under Human Resources, ten items under Operations, and four items under the Good of the Order or other business. Board members, is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, is there a Good Cause item this evening?
Uh, yes, there is a Good Cause item. Thank you. Is there a motion?
I move to, um, I'm so sorry. I move to approve the, um, agenda as written.
Thank you.
Second.
Second. Moved by Ms. Jordan, and seconded by Mr. Fisher.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just for the record, if the superintendent can read the explanation for the Good Cause item, so we have that.
Okay, I'm sorry. Please.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, members of the public, the motion is the board member will move to direct the superintendent to use the media access form originally supported by the staff and the Curriculum Advisory Committee until such time as the board can pass a media policy.
Don't you have a good cause?
I do not. So, Mr. Chair, we have one item, which is for Good Cause.
Okay.
As the...
Sorry, can't see, but there is no Good Cause item.
Okay. That is the, the motion is likely to be made under Good Cause, sir.
Okay, thank you. Would you, everyone, please record their vote? The motion to approve the agenda passes seven, zero.
May I, may I ask a question?
Yes.
I, I don't recall having done a board, uh, member motion as Good of the Order. I always thought it was Good Cause. So, does that mean that we will or will not be permitting public comment when I make my motion?
There will be public comment, uh, Mr. Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just for clarification, my script indicated that there was a Good Cause item, but apparently there is not a Good Cause item, so that's why I mentioned it, because I was following my script. But there is nothing, your motion will come in during Good of the Order, or board member comments as normal, with your public comments.
Okay.
Thank you.
And thank you for that clarification. As is accustomed to the board, Mrs. Patrico will lead us in a moment of silence. Afterward, Ms. Jordan will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Please stand.
Please bow your head silently in a moment of silent prayer or reflection.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. The character of word for August is responsibility. Winston Churchill wrote, "The price of greatness is responsibility." The design you see displayed on the screen was created by Samantha Kearls, a ninth-grade student at Norfolk Myers High School. The next item on the agenda is public comment. Mrs. DePay Bruno, please address the item of public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening. School Board policy provides the opportunity at this point in the meeting to address the board concerning any matter on this meeting's agenda, or any other matter relevant to the operation of the school district. Please complete a public comment card and put it in the basket provided. If you need a public comment card, they are provided by our staff. The rules concerning public comment are posted in the back and will be made from the podium in the front center aisle. Please be advised that the board will not respond during public comment to remarks made by speakers. Concerns will be addressed by the superintendent or his staff as necessary, and the chair may comment as deemed appropriate at the conclusion of public comment. The superintendent may also comment if he deems it appropriate. The purpose of public comment is to provide feedback on district issues such as duties, responsibilities, decisions, and the general operation of the school district. The school board is viewpoint-neutral during public comment. We ask that decorum be kept and respect be shown, which is what is expected when a government agency conducts official business. Therefore, abusive language such as cursing, insults, derogatory language levied against an individual or a class of people are prohibited. Further, personal attacks such as name-calling are prohibited. In addition, clapping, hissing, and booing or a display of temper during public comment is prohibited. Speakers who fail to follow proper decorum in the chambers will be ruled out of order by the board chair or the parliamentarian. Any speaker continuing with such remarks will be required to relinquish the microphone per Board Policy 0169.1, and may be removed from the chambers by the sergeant at arms. Per Board Policy 0169.1, the time per speaker is three minutes if there are twenty, two minutes if there are thirty, and one minute if there are thirty-one speakers or more. The maximum time allotted for public comment is one hour, sixty speakers. You will find a countdown on the big screen in the front of the room. Once your time has elapsed, the microphone will automatically shut off. Please state your name when you approach the microphone. I will call your names five speakers at a time. Please follow staff's direction when lining up. Mr. Chairman, there are twenty-eight speakers that wish to address the board this evening, two minutes per speaker.
Thank you. Make sure you have completed a public comment card if you intend to provide public comment. The card is a public record identifying those who speak and providing contact information for staff to follow up. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak but did not? We have one. So, we will have twenty-nine. If y'all will fill out a card, and we'll go ahead and get started, Mrs. Bruno, Attorney Bruno.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Will the following individuals please line up? Frank Mammon, Jamie Merchant, Naomi Thompson, Bobby DeLisandro, Deb Nesselhoff.
Yeah, restart the clock.
Uh, good evening.
Can we restart the clock?
Okay, good evening, thank you. Um, hello, my name is Frank Mammoni. I'm a retired chemist. My wife and I permanently reside in Cape Coral. We wanted to thank the school board for approving a process for challenged books that protects kids and honors parental rights to have input into the materials their children are reading. Our students need to succeed in all studies, notably STEM topics. Global competition is intense, and our students, teachers, and parents need to work together to provide our students with successful futures. That's all I wanted to say.
Good evening, Board. I'm Bobby DeLisandro, and tonight I'd like to speak to you as a former superintendent and also as a community member that loves their community and loves the school system. I've been so encouraged by the activity of the board in the challenge process by adopting the policy, and having a wonderful process piece with input from the community, parents, and from the Purple Group, all who have very different ideas. And a form was made that actually is state-worthy, and I think is the best one in the state. We were surprised, however, to know that we had to change or maybe update our, our media consent form, which is what gives parents the right to speak and say what they want their children to do. I, as a superintendent, was very surprised when at the briefing meeting, the superintendent brought the consent form forward and asked not just for your input, but for your direction. Now, that puts you in a very precarious position, and him too, on a slippery slope, because that's beyond your purview. And you did give input, and you did give a direction that night, and provided an option which is the most restrictive of all. And by the way, two board members were not there, and this is such an important item, thank you for, I think, tabling it tonight, that they should have had comment from their constituents. I just want you to keep doing the good work, because it's so important to have community comment, but I must urge you, as a former superintendent, watch your language. Please do, superintendent, watch the language, because it gets you and them in a very vulnerable position. Thank you, School Board.
My name is Naomi Thompson. This is the first time I'm addressing the school board, and the first time I'm attending one of these meetings. I did not realize when I filled out the blue card that it was not an attendance card and that it was a public comment card, till my name was called. So, I just would like to say, I am honored to be here and see all of you at work. I remember standing in the election lines and helping people to register when Jada's family was there, and I'm really happy to see the democracy at work and all of these good people here participating, and I hope fantastic work is done and consensus is reached tonight.
Will the following individuals please line up? James Winham, Amber Ware, Jerry Ware, Robert Daniels, Denise Eberly.
First of all, thank you for what you do and the opportunity to speak. My name is Deborah Nesselhoff. I have been a resident of Bonita Springs and now of Sterro for almost twelve years. I tell people that I'm a retired educator, but educators never really retire. I was a teacher and principal for over thirty years in public education in Missouri. I was also a teacher at a children's hospital and a preschool director for many years. I have multiple degrees in education, administration, with emphasis in curriculum, human resources, and child psychology and development, but my most important job was parent and now grandparent. I've tried very hard to be a listener and a supporter at the many meetings I've attended over the last few months of the school board and ad hoc meetings. I truly don't enjoy being the speaker, but I am concerned. I understand that the recommended procedures to address media access and stakeholder challenges may have been rewritten by some board members. Uh, now, I understand that's going to be discussed again later, and I, I hope it is. I'm really appalled that you would create a committee of educators, attorneys, and parents, and then have them work for days, weeks, months, to dissect current policy, newest state statutes, laws, still addressing the needs of the students. And while I may not have personally agreed with everything the committee came up with, I would never disrespect their work and our tax dollars that went into this by rewriting them to my liking.
Hello, Jamie Merchant. I'll be super quick to get through, uh, public comment, but just wanted to say thank you to the board members for the support for parental rights and creating a process document and opt-in policy, um, for media center materials this year. I appreciate it.
Good evening. Uh, my name is James Wyndham, and I live in a small community called Alva, and they're building, want to build a school right directly across from my home, which changes the whole reason that I moved out there. Um, I'm not opposed to the school. I understand we need schools, because we have a lot of children that are coming out there. But I find it odd that we don't have enough teachers to teach the children that we have now in the schools we have available, but yet we're going to put one in a place that it seemed that, that, that no one wanted before, because it was put up for sale just two years ago, and now, all of a sudden, it's going to become a high school and a middle school, and my rural community will be ruined over it where they're going to put it.
Good evening. My name is Amber Ware, and I am the Senior Center Manager for the City of Fort Myers, Stars Division. The reason why I'm here is because I want to address the issue of busing. I did not attend the last meeting where the bus routes were approved, because I had had several discussions with members of the Transportation Division, and we had worked out an agreement where everything was to be settled, and the current bus stops that had not been assigned to Browden Edison Avenue would remain the same. It had come to my realization on Friday and Monday that Browden Edison would no longer be a bus stop for four of the schools that it used to be a bus stop for. It seems that this was done as an overall concept to eliminate daycares as a courtesy stop, and I understand the reason why the district did that. However, yes, I do feel that Star is an exception to that rule. Star's not only services all of the students that is in our after-school program, but we service the entire community. More than two-hundred-and-fifty students, um, from various walks of life, attend a varying programs within the Stars. Thirty percent of our population are school district employees, now of which would have no way of actually attending work, because their students have, they have to get home to get their students at two and three o'clock in the afternoon. These are your bus drivers. These are your cafeteria workers. These are your, uh, teachers assistants, and some teachers. Now, they will have to leave their jobs to go pick their students up. You cannot accommodate the need. You are going to need these services, eliminating...
Good evening, Board. Jerry Ware, and I'm again speaking about the transportation of after-school programs. We thought we had this all ironed out, and I was here last, uh, School Board meeting. I thanked, um, Mr., uh, Jared, uh, for helping us to get that bus stop back in place. However, at the, um, meeting last night with the parents, the parents kept saying, "No, uh, we are told at the school district or at our school meetings that the bus stop is not available and the transportation will not be provided." Now, let's keep one thing in mind. Busing goes back to the integration of the schools, and unfortunately, the children in the Dunbar community have always had to suffer. However, we have, as parents and community leaders and workers, we work through it. And so, once again, I'm asking you, the proximity plan, I understand, but we've got to keep in mind who's being affected, and that's our children. We cannot have latchkey kids. We have too many of them already. Mrs. Ware, that spoke before me, addressed and tried to begin your mind, the kind of kids and parents that we are servicing. So, I don't know what is happening, what games are being played, but I think that you need to go back to the board, and Thursday is not the time for parents to be wondering what's going to happen to their children while they're trying to work. I don't know what happened. I really wouldn't ask an answer. I know you don't like to respond tonight, but Mr. Persons, I'm calling on you, my friend, for us to have some kind of conversation by tomorrow, so parents can know Thursday what's going to happen to their children that need to be serviced to the bu...
Will the following individuals please line up? Julie Winham, Erica Green, and Alexandria Davis, I have you as one speaker. Betty Ann Sherman, Arliece Williams, and Joe Phillips.
Hello, my name's Robert Daniels. I, myself, is a latchkey kid, can I, and I can speak to the lack of safety involved in that particular kind of lifestyle for a youth. And I also used to live in Dunbar, three blocks from the Stars complex, and I would, as a teacher, sometimes watch the kids walk in the streets. More than once, I had to chase away a stray dog that was bothering the students going back and forth to the bus, perky and a virtual teacher. Living in that house, I also found bullet holes in the walls. That particular stop, that Star stop, that's more than just money, that's safety for the children in that neighborhood, that's something we need to take a second look at, and perhaps other not-for-profit organizations that were on that stop. Past that, I've actually came here today to say thank you for whoever was behind the change in the PD exercises at the start of the school year for the teachers. I actually managed to get it all done in the first week. I can't explain how many times it took me to October trying to squeeze it in around work to get through all of those trainings. I found it much more helpful, much more informative, and much more respectful of my time. That being said, not only have I been a teacher for twelve years now, I've been a biology teacher for most of that time, and I've taught US history, and one of the things we learn is that there's just some topics, you don't tell the kids what you think about, because you want them to think for themselves, and those are conversations for them to have for their parents. If I have to stricture and censor myself in the classroom, at the very least, we can make sure that the books that present those ideas and challenge those ideas are flagged for the parents, so that those same ideas are held for the parents to discuss with their children, because if you don't trust me to do it as a trained individual, why would you trust an anonymous author who may have an axe to grind?
I give this to you guys?
One of the secretaries will take it from you.
It'd be nice if I could remember all this stuff. Um, good evening, I'm Denise Eberly. I represent Alva Inc. this evening. I am Board Director and Chairman of the Oversight Committee. I'm here representing, unfortunately, tonight is our scheduled meeting night, which is why other board members are not present. Alva Inc. still opposes the high school, and now we just learned of an additional middle school. I had a whole presentation prepared for tonight until I heard last night's Lehigh Council meeting with Commissioner Greenwell. Mr. Persons was in attendance as well, but I did email you my previous presentation last night, along with photos and even a video. Commissioner Greenwell seems to believe he can speed things up, specific to widening of Joel Boulevard between Adie and Tuckahoe. As a county commissioner, quote, "As a county commissioner, I can be a pain in the ass," unquote. Per DOT, it would not happen in ten, fifteen, twenty years to widen, and eminent domain would be required to do so. Per a citizen at meeting last night from Lehigh, neighbors are freaking out, quote-unquote, pertaining to increased traffic impacts. Four landing, oh, four laning will increase an already heavily trafficked area, it would increase speeding, cause major backups, especially if a traffic light is installed at school entrance. Major traffic safety concerns, making left-hand turn into school from Joel per DOT, speaker, a major thoroughfare. Let's not forget dump trucks, which inundate Joel, and then add to that the dump trucks brought in with massive amounts of field dirt for that property. There are many accidents now, and you can't even get out onto Joel during morning and evening. Traffic will divert down the narrow residential ditched roads... Traffic will divert down the narrow residential ditch roads of Edwards Packing House and Styles to bypass the light at Joel and 80, causing even further backups as they try to enter Joel. This is a huge safety hazard to the residents that live on these roads. But I guess heck with safety. Look at how long-
Hi. Good afternoon. My name is Julie Wyndham, and I'm opposed to the high school as it does affect our living facilities, our roadways, the traffic that Lehigh is already cutting through our little rural area that, you know, the, it's almost like a Speedway already. So if you put a high school and a middle school and everybody that's coming down these little roads, it's, you know, really going to hurt the environment. It's going to hurt our living availabilities of getting out, getting in, out of the area that we live. It's going to affect our, our property. As if they have to widen our roads, that means that they're going to be taking some of our land away from what we have already. We have a lot of rural areas that we have a lot of, you know, livestock and so forth, and we try to go ahead and keep those in, but sometimes if they get out, that can be an issue as well. I know we can't go ahead and possibility change your mind in regards to that, but the thing is, is we can go ahead and ask if you guys could put a barrier wall on Tuckahoe and just make the main entrance as being Joel, so that way we can still keep our area there, and Joel can have the entrance of the schools as entrance-wise. Because otherwise, everybody already from Lehigh is cutting off of Joel, coming through Tuckahoe at 60 miles an hour, and that is a problem, especially when we have a lot of rural area and animals and children and people trying to go ahead and just live their normal lives. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Betty Ann Sherman. I am a retired teacher and reading specialist. As an educator, concerned Lee and proud Lee County citizen, mother, grandmother, and avid reader, I was disappointed and alarmed to learn that additional restrictions have been placed on our children's access to books without input from professional staff, the consent of one present board member, and with two board members not in attendance at the workshop. Why were book procedures rewritten when an effective opt-out form already existed? Why was an option for full access to check out all library media materials, including restricted ones, not offered? Parents I have spoken to reject any books being challenged and would like their rights protected by you. As it now stands, they are being held hostage as they cannot enroll their children in their public schools without signing a form where all the choices online involve eliminating every child's access to restricted books, and the choices by cellphone conceal half the wording so that parents cannot see their choices in their entirety. This is an abridgement of individual liberty. Freedom is making books available. Indoctrination is taking away the right of exposure to a wide variety of ideas, opinions, and beliefs. Education's purpose is to replace an empty mind with an open one. Our children's trust and innocence will be protected by witnessing our mutual respect, compromises, and impartial decision-making on their behalf. I hope you see this matter as worthy of further attention and fair-minded revision after giving credence to all the workable suggestions that have been brought forth since this process began. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Erica Green. This is my daughter Alexandria Davis. We again, I come to you guys with the issue about the bus. We have a special needs child that needs, has IMP in place that needs, he needs to be put physically on the bus and taken off the bus. Now, the issue with the bus issue, not going to the daycares, we both are healthcare workers, so our schedule varies. So that's why we had him put into the daycare system. So now, with that being changed, that they're not going to pick up from the daycares, that leaves us to try to get him on the bus at home, which that kind of conflicts with our schedule because we're working. So now, at the end of the day, he's going to suffer because we can't get him on the bus. And then, next thing you know, they're going to have sent a caseworker to my home, asked him why he's not in school. Can't get him there. There's no way we can get him there if the bus is not picking him up. That's why we had him in before and after-school daycare. But with that taken away from us, what can we do? There's nothing we can do. So if he misses school, he's going to suffer. I have my education, she has hers. So he's going to suffer without the bus. So that leaves us with no option but try to keep him at home if we can't get him to school. So I'm asking you guys to please rethink this situation and think about the parents that cannot get their kids to and from school. Thank you.
Will the following individuals please line up. Martha Shackleton, Dr. Samuel Stewart, Kristy Divagili, Dennis Zellers, Patrick Finkler.
My name is Martha Shackleton. I retired to Alva because I wanted a rural community, not congestion, which is what we're already getting in Alva with the traffic on Tuckahoe and Packing House, which is where I reside. And we don't have that many students in that area. It should be, the school should be built in an area where it's more dense with population. We have 2020 property around us, and I understand that they're interested in purchasing this property. And I don't think the infrastructure would take or support building schools in our area. Would be dangerous with the flooding that we have. We don't have sidewalks. We have ditches, and we have animals, cattle, chickens, you name it, we have it out there, and that's the way we like it.
Good afternoon. Oh, good evening. My name is Arliece Williams, and I am here to ask you guys to please take a look at the proximity again. Several people here are talking about it tonight, and the reason being is because years ago, the Stars complex had a bus stop right in front of the Stars door. Transportation told the Stars, "Oh, we have to take it out because it's too dangerous." But then they had other bus stops that they was doing exactly that, going into a parking lot. So where the Stars complex is concerned, it is not courtesy bus stop. Before COVID, they took it from the Stars. They made a stop on Edison and Brown. So those students are actually at an existing bus stop. I understand the proximity plan, and I understand that you guys have room for improvement. It is an issue. We have parents all over this county that will quit their jobs, and some have, district employees and other people, because they cannot leave their children at home by themselves, and they don't have access to after-school care. The schools can't do it because most of your schools now have a waiting list. So the schools cannot handle all of those kids. So again, we are asking you guys to look at the proximity plan and put the bus stops back at the daycares so our parents can work and take care of their children. Thank you.
I am Smokin' Joe. Meeting after meeting, I come to advocate for the education and safety of our students and support staff. I have requested a forensic audit. Everything I've ever said was with the best interest of our children and community in my heart. While my accurate criticism of certain board members and their quest for power and fame with no accountability or shame, I am regaled as vile. Apparently, we have a different understanding of the word vile. Vile, to me, is the lack of protection for our children. Vile is also our students being below average academically. Sexual assault, cover-ups, and double digits sounds vile. Allegations of mistreatment to staff we have received sounds pretty devout. While I agree the parents should unquestionably have authority over all media available to their child, this has turned into a distraction from the issues that are mentally, emotionally, and physically affecting these students immediately. My stance on this issue is simply, if my daughter comes home with inappropriate material, I will sue you for contributing to the delinquency of a minor. I come here alone. I have no entourage, no aspirations of personal political placement. I'm a father, and I'm here for my children. You won't see me dressed as a McDonald's milkshake advertisement. I'm not a former educator, board member, librarian, or a lesbian with a family member on the board. I'm just your everyday Floridian. Pursuant to board policy, we can't show expressions of appreciation, support, or disagreement unless you're a purple promoter of pornography. Then you can email your group and instruct them on how and when to disrupt the comment and even be granted permission by the chair. Imagine if we eliminated the distractions until we were able to successfully educate and protect our children. Everything else should be secondary. If truth and proof are vile, consider the challenge-
I am Sam Stewart, father, grandfather, and great-grandfather, and a retired district county superintendent from New Jersey. I'm here tonight to make two points. One is a comment about book banning. We all want our children to have books readily available that are age-appropriate, engaging, aspirational, inspirational, and aspirational. We believe, or I believe, the most qualified people to make selections or to review books under consideration for banning are professional educators. I applaud a North Dakota politician who recently said to a parent, "If you have a concern about a book, talk to a librarian." So we applaud, only two of the 35 book challenges last year were from parents. The other 33 came from community people. So keep the culture wars out of our schools. Protect our students. Protect our teachers. That's why school boards are nonpartisan. So now about the teachers. My youngest daughter had difficulty learning to read, and as a concerned educator, advanced educational enlightenment, I was determined to fix her. We went to numerous reading clinics. Once, when we were on our way to another test, she said, "How many tests do we have to have?" And anyway, I couldn't. So then I went to a new district. I met a new teacher, and I explained to her all the things I had learned and done about Jill, and she said, "I think Jill has had enough of daddy." Jill learned to read that year, got a BA, an MBA, and reads at night. Thank you.
Hi. I'm Dennis Zellers. I'm a resident of Alva. And I believe that the school that's proposed in, off of Joel Boulevard is being placed at the wrong place. It should be up on the north side of the river where more people live, and there is building, a big development up there. It probably should be up in that area. And we're rural down there, and we would really not appreciate having a school in that area. Thank you.
Will the following individuals please line up. David Carter, Stacy Imar, Lou Navarro, Robert Roper, Randy Imant.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Patrick Finkler. I live near the proposed school. I'm against the building of the school in Alva. There are 3,000, over 3,000 residents in Alva, and the average age is 51 and 1/2. Bringing a new school to our area is not needed. Ideally, we'd like you to look at other locations where things are needed. The last speaker talked about the north side of the river. I think that's a great idea. There's huge developments that are starting over there, and there's going to be a need for schools, not here on Joel and Tuckahoe. One of the things that I find interesting about this whole process is we haven't really talked to the residents. We're coming down here to tell you about our opposition to building the school, but we'd actually really like to be surveyed as a community. We in Alva are agriculture land. We own livestock. We care about the environment, conservation. We care about the Panthers, the birds, all of the other things that are out there. We don't want the additional noise and traffic that is brought with the building of additional school. Finally, just one other point is, last week when I was here, I learned that there were over 350 open positions that the county is trying to hire for. If we build a new school, you have more open positions to hire for. How are you going to hire people to teach in this school? How are you going to hire people who are focused in the community, who are local workforce, not just people who are brought in from elsewhere? I would rather see this money either built, build a school elsewhere on the north side of the river, give teachers raises, and focus on some of the other issues that people have talked about here, like transportation, books, and otherwise. Thank you so much.
Kristy Divagili. Good evening. I don't get to come up here as often as I'd like, especially just to say thank you, but that's what I'm here for today. I'd like to start by thanking the district staff for making the beginning of the year parent forms process infinitely smoother than it was last year. I was able to easily consent or decline consent on all of the forms, and I found the links offering additional information to be extremely helpful. I'd like to thank the board for choosing to protect and, protect kids and honor the rights of parents with the new media access form. And I'd like to thank the superintendent for asking for direction from the board in regards to the media access form, because he works for the board, and it's his job to do what they say. So I would just leave, I would just say, ignore the hateful rhetoric and remember that it's coming from the same people who think that the board is just a rubber stamper that works for the superintendent, which you do not. I'll end my comments with this. Parents are the most qualified to decide what books their kids read. Period. End of story. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm David Carter. I live at the corner of Tuckahoe and Joel. The property y'all talking about, building the school zones right across from my house. I agree with what a lot of the speakers has already said. The infrastructure is not there for schools. The roads are too small. The road in front of the property y'all wanting to build is a two-lane road. Somebody was talking about, the county commissioner, I think, Greenwell was talking about, from Tuckahoe to 80. That road's even narrower. But from 18th Street clear to 80 is nothing but a two-lane road, no sidewalks, no nothing. Why don't y'all come down there about 6:00 in the morning and try to get out on that road? I have the coffee ready for you. Something nobody has said, there's no city water or sewer there. So that means them schools are going to have to put in a great big water plant and a great big sewer plant. Everybody in that area is on shallow water wells. Are y'all going to guarantee us that our wells are going to be fine after y'all pump out that much water for that kind of facility? That's another problem you got, right there. And I was at your other meetings when y'all had them in Alva, and we asked the same question. Nobody has ever answered us on these questions of when y'all was going to build a road, about the water problems that's going to come with this, or anything else. At this point, I am against it. There is property where y'all already have four-lane roads like out on 80 to build this school. There is places where it has city water and sewer, so y'all are not taking a chance on there. Because personally, I've lived in this area for 59 years. I'd like to be able to relive the rest of my life there. I'd like to be able to relive the rest of my life there. But, big water plants and all of that, what are we going to do for water? That's what I have to say about this. I'm against the school at this point because of that reason.
I appreciate it. Y'all have a good evening.
Good evening. My name is Stacy Iman. I'm against the school being built there, and I'm going to come at it from a mom's point of view. I have been hit sitting at that stop sign, or that stoplight on Joel and 80, twice. Sitting at the stoplight. Imagine a child trying to cross that road to go to that school. How is he going to get across that school if he lived over in that Tuckahoe area? How safe is he? How safe is that little girl trying to cross the road? I prayed every day my son sat at the bus stop on Tuckahoe and Joel, trying to get on that bus. He had to cross the street to get on that bus. Scared the living. Daylights happening every day he had to get on that bus. I wouldn't want my child crossing that road one day. And now it scares me because now he has to cross that road now to go to school in a car, let alone just trying to walk it. I don't want that school there. I wouldn't want somebody else's kid to go through that, having to cross that road. Nope. To me, that road is too scary for anybody to have to worry about their kid crossing it, especially if they open it up and make it more lanes. Nope. I wouldn't want that and wouldn't wash shit on anybody else. There needs to go somewhere where there's a thicker density, where there's more people, a denser volume of people, where there's more population. We're a little tiny area.
I'm Randy Iman. I am against the school for a few reasons. One is, I live on Tuckahoe also, and the infrastructure just absolutely is not there. Greenwell's such a pusher of all this, he just pushed through all the big development out in, right off 31. Why don't we put it right there on 31? There's actually no schools in that area. Why don't we put a school there? Because then you can get all the new developments right there, and all the people right around there will now have a school. We already have a school on Alva. We don't need another one. They, you know, and 31, since they're widening it to four lanes already, and they're going to completely reconfigure their traffic configuration, be a perfect location right across from Lee Civic Center there. Perfect location. You've got all kinds of land there. There's now commercial development. Buy some land there and put it in the commercial development area. Be perfect. And then that would get all of the new development areas, perfect school to go to. So basically, that's the way I feel about it. Thanks.
Will the following individuals please line up? Jamie Tyre, Marge Cox, Dr. Shirley Chapman, Robert Rogers, John Johnson, John Tippens.
Good evening, Superintendent, School Board, Lou Navarro, retired teacher. Let's start with the $60,000 starting salary with longevity. I've been speaking about this. I've asked Debbie and Melissa to make a study like you did for the guns in the classroom guardians. Here's the facts. Bottom principal assistant makes 78K entry. Principals are knocking down six figures. Downtown, you're knocking down six figures, with the chief executive topping 255K. Now, we can't afford a decent teacher's salary. The board has given themselves a raise according to wink at the starting teacher's salary of 48.2. I thought it was 48.6. You know, folks, it's women's parity. You're not going to have women teachers or nurses. They're going to go the way of the Roman Catholic nun. School Board, I didn't like your discriminatory policy when you eliminated my little respect for the veterans. All I wanted was you to put Veterans Day back as not a hurricane makeup day. How inconsiderate to veterans. And I don't like your discriminatory policy where I couldn't show a little picture. We will take care of that. Ms. Dupay, I'm surprised at you with your stature allowing a policy like this. And I'm not picking on you, but I'm wondering. Anyway, student achievement is dismal. And why? You can't get qualified people, and you won't. Don't build the schools. No one's going. Are you ready, Fuff? Come on.
Robert Roper. It's been almost two years since I gave my first public comment concerning objectional materials in the library and media centers. All we wanted then, and all we want now, is not banning books, but protecting childhood innocence. Tonight, I want to thank you, Board, and Dr. Bernier, and all the professional staff that worked so hard on this process. I want to thank you that you did not follow all of my suggestions, and I want to thank you for being patient with me. I want to thank you for not fully adopting any particular point of view, but purposely choosing to protect children and parental rights. I want to thank you that there is an option for a parent to check that allows all access to all materials without any restriction, removing any indication even, making the challenge virtually invisible to the student. I want to thank you for the option on this form for a parent to advocate for their own child. No one else is restricting that person's child from potentially objectional material, putting the parents in the driver's seat as to when and what conversations they want to have with their own child. I want to thank you on behalf of the parent that's dealing with a child struggling with unwanted gender confusion. Let the parent decide what reading is best. I want to thank you for the parent, on behalf of the parent that's dealing with a child with suicidal ideations. There are more than those than you may suspect. Let the parent get the professional help and the need, and not from a book that glamorizes suicide. I thank you on behalf of the single parent trying to guide her son away from violent tendencies and doing the best she can. I want to thank you on behalf of the mom and the dad who want their children in the public school, but at the same time, trying to protect them against worldly influences. I want to thank you on behalf of the parent that later in the school year, I'm not going to be able to finish my thank yous to you. There were too many.
Good evening. I'm Marge Cox. I reside in Bonita Springs. I retired after 40 years in public education, most of which was spent in some form of serving libraries, school libraries particularly. I'm here tonight sharing words also from Dr. Madeline Stewart, who couldn't be here this evening. I'm here as one of the team leaders of the Purple Group to represent those who signed the letters sent to the board and school administrators on August 6th. There are many others, parents, grandparents, teachers, even business owners, who agree with our statements and questions. My remarks represent the beliefs of many who are not here tonight. First, we wonder why the superintendent asked the school board whose responsibility it is to make policy, to direct the drafting of a process document, the media access form, which is the staff's responsibility. The result? The new form that provides no option for a parent to allow their child full access to all educational materials currently accessible in the media center. That violates some parental rights when they don't have that right. The original media access form with appropriate choices was one of the process documents presented to the board at the workshop July 26th. These were developed with discussion and input over the course of many months at the curriculum advisory committee, with comments from community members. We ask you to remove the restrictive, misleading media form currently on the website and wait until a well-constructed form is developed by staff. Finally, we're concerned about teachers, who are the heart and soul of the learning environment. Research tells us that teachers are the difference for the students in their education. We want them to feel supported and appreciated. I've been at several curriculum meetings and school board meetings, and I know a lot of time has been put into this process, and I appreciate the work that those committee members have done, as well as the school board. Thank you for the opportunity to share concerns this evening.
Good evening, Board. My name is Rob Rogers, also from Alva. I have a 10-acre tract on Packing House. I'm against building the new school. We have 2020 land behind my 10-acre tract. We have 2020 land on the east side of Joel. I've watched the changes over the last 18 years in the area due to Lehigh buildout, the city, of course, moving out towards the east also. We currently have sheet flow issues, especially this time of year and going into the month of September, in our area. And putting a high school and a middle school in that area is just going to add to those water issues that we currently deal with. On top of it, it is a wildlife corridor. That's why we have 2020 land. And adding the additional traffic and potential development of the area is going to destroy that, and we are the last stand in the county for that type of land. You know, we love our agriculture, we love our animals, and with that, I'm against building there. You have 142 square miles and Lehigh acres, which already has new infrastructure that you could potentially put a school there, or you could put it on the other side of the river with the new infrastructure that's being built there also. So you have options. It's just our little community is not, it's not the time for it, and the development is not there, and the infrastructure's not there. Thank you.
Good afternoon. There's an old saying that says, "It takes a village to raise a child or children." And we have places within the village that helps the kids as far as the Stars, other after-school programs, Boys and the Girls Club, and other daycares. And the school district of Lee County is also a part of this village. So we're asking you guys to make sure that the kids in the village get to their destination after school safely. And that's with the transportation of the Lee County School District. So we're just asking for your help and to make sure these kids be safe within the village, because we're all part of the same village. Thanks.
Could you state your name, please?
Jamie Tyre.
Good evening, Board. My name is Shirley Chapman, and I was listening to all of the persons who don't want a middle school in their area, and that's what I'm coming to ask for. We would love to have a middle school in the Dunbar-Tice area. We should have had one already, but that didn't work out a few years ago. And I was thinking, where would be a good place? Well, once Franklin Park gets reestablished in their location, just where they are temporarily, might be a good place. But we would love to have a middle school in our community. That's why I'm here. And I want to thank, I think I heard one thank you before I came up here, and I want to thank the superintendent, his administrative staff, and the board for all of the diversity that you have already hired. I know that you've been working tirelessly, and I know you can't make anybody come, but you have certainly encouraged people to come. And we are hoping that teachers will continually come so that we will have enough staff for our students. Because you know, anything worth doing is worth doing well. And if that's going to happen, we've got to work together. But in your working, maybe you want to consider what they're saying and move the middle school on down to the Dunbar community. Thank you so much and have a good evening.
Good evening. My name is John Johnson. I want to just thank you guys and each and everyone, your respective positions here tonight, this evening. I want to talk about, well, first of all, this is my first time speaking at a school board meeting. As a born and raised resident of Fort Myers, I like to address the topic of the transportation and the busing system. I want to be a voice for the children who are being directly affected, maybe the most by this change, considering the bus stops at these facilities such as daycares, the Stars Complex, and any other childcare facilities or after-school programs. And I feel the children are maybe the most directly affected by this change, as resources are being stripped away from them. As a son and grandson of previous school bus drivers who relied on the resources such as the Stars Complex, Boys and Girls Club, daycare YMCA, just a little tidbit, I learned I swim at the Stars Complex. And I strongly urge this change with removing these stops to be considered and brought back to the table, so the resolution can be put on the table that doesn't strip resources from the children and puts stress on the household and the family. Once again, I thank each and everyone, you and your respective positions, and thank you for this opportunity to voice my opinion here tonight.
Good evening, Board. My name is John Tippens. I've been in transportation for Lee County School Board 10 years, going on 11. I ask that you all please reconsider the proximity and the buses picking up and dropping off at the daycares. A lot of us, including myself, depend on that. I have sisters, aunts, family members who drive buses, been driving out buses for many years in the school district itself. Please reconsider it, because we don't have anyone else to rely on. Y'all say that we are the first face and the last face that the students see. So if y'all don't reconsider this, then the district, they'll be seeing a lot of last faces of us employees, because you won't give us any other chance, another choice. So please reconsider it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, that concludes public comment.
Thank you. Mr. Superintendent, would you like to address the budget?
I do, and I appreciate everyone who's come to speak tonight. I'll try to take them in large buckets. First and foremost, to those of you who are talking about NNN or the school out at Alva, as well as RR, which is the middle school planned even further in the future for the same site, as well as OO and QQQ. On August 16th, this board will be considering the process for the new 10-year capital plan. It will be one of the first workshops we host. There will be additional ones. I have written down the aspect of survey, also ensuring that during that presentation that we speak to the water and sewage issue. I believe I know exactly what our plan is for that, and we will cover that with the board, because the board has asked for that. Rather than doing it as a separate presentation, we really believe that NNN and OO can't be seen separately. They have to be seen as part of the full picture of what's going to happen in the school district of Lee County with increasing enrollment. A lot of you and I, and my finance department even, expected to be losing children this year with the number of opportunities they were provided by HB1. We've actually, even with the withdrawals, still grown by over 2,000 students. We've actually, even with the withdrawals, still grown by over 2,000 students. This past weekend, we grew by 197. We continue to grow. We are currently, and I was going to share this in my final comments, but it's come up several times about this particular school. So for our Alva community, we hear you, we will host workshops, we'll do the work. Please come, bring the other individuals, and we will make sure that we continue to have an open dialogue as long as we can about NNN. NNN has received approval to move into Phase 1. We already have a contractor, and we have some contractual relationships that as a board we are going to need to honor. But I want to impress upon the board, I was going to share this at the last part of the meeting, but it's since the people are here, I think it's best to share it now. We are currently 95% staffed in our classrooms. We still are looking for 220 teachers. That was more than 450 at the beginning of the summer. Our Human Resources Department, led by Mr. Dotick, Hillary McLean, and their amazing team, has reversed engineered how we go about finding educators and bus drivers. we needed over 181 bus drivers. This year, we're down to needing only 60. It's still a huge number. I'm not proud of being 95% staffed. The goal is to be 100% staffed. But if you build it, they do come. And we've added over 2,000 seats. We've staffed two brand-new schools and the additional staffing at Lehigh Acres Middle. So we are finding teachers, and we are going to continue to grow, at least according to the demographic data. But I am sensitive to the speakers tonight and hope that we can continue to dialogue about this particular issue. With transportation, when we approved the proximity plan, we were very clear that as superintendent, I have a responsibility to ensure students get to school and from school safely and on time. My bus drivers, our bus drivers, this team, these incredible souls that I will see at 5:00 a.m. on Thursday morning, I don't know how they do what they do. They have my utmost respect, and you are correct, you are the first and last person that they will see every day. And thank you for your service to our students and our community. But we have to consider all of our students. And if my bus drivers are here and really with me, they will support me in saying what we do to our middle school's children and the time we get them home is inappropriate. It's also inappropriate that due to our current scheduling, we, last year, were arriving 20 to 30 minutes late to a school day, and our middle school students missed their first period of education. It's not appropriate, and we had to make changes. By doing the proximity plan, we are saving over 15,000 miles per day in bus transportation. That's 15,000 less miles on our buses, on our drivers, on our warranties, but it's 15,000 miles erased from a route that will allow our high schools, elementary, and middle schools to increase their on-time percentage both to and from school. As a board, I've shared with you, we have planned and approved a proximity plan for our students, which will utilize the current bus stops in order to bring students as close as possible to the locations without deviating from our established routes. We have stops surrounding the Stars, some as close as 200 feet, some as close as 1,700 feet. We are going to be able to get students to the Stars Complex. We are currently working with the queue in order to be able to do the same thing. But I'd also share that before the board member asks me, any individual with an IEP has a different set of rules. And I've already asked Dr. Cupid McCoy to get that family's name and parents with an IEP because they're financed differently regarding how we do transportation. We have a responsibility to those students, and we will make sure we make good on that promise because that's what I promised the board we would do. When it comes to books, I did look for direction. I did look for direction, but I looked around direction for one particular item. I wanted to know what the board's pleasure was and to hear their discussion so that I can make an informed decision with staff as to what would be the checkmark for a parent not filling out the form. I suspected not what I received. I got the third option being identified of some access to the media center, but until such time as the parent filled out the form, certain books would be restricted from that individual student. It is my commitment to this board and to this community, just like the forms for our clinic, we will find those parents who have not filled out those forms, and we will get them to make a choice. Because it's too vital, I can't agree with both sides any more than I can agree. Reading is fundamental to the educational trajectory of a student. Being entertained, reading what I wanted to read, finding the opportunity to read books that my parents were reading and that they felt at an appropriate age were okay for me to read. I will never forget the book that hooked me into reading, and ever, because it was the first time I really understood what it was like to be captured and to be taken to a different place. And I can assure you, every night, just before these eyes close, usually with the book on my chest, I read before I go to bed. Because it's an important skill, it continues to open the mind, it continues to introduce us to new ideas. And I don't believe any member of this board or your superintendent wants to remove that right. Lastly, I want to thank our teacher who comes all the time, Robert. There's a lot of people to thank, the fact that you can be here tonight and not working on your required compliance training. Certainly, our professional development department is probably the key leader, and you've met Ms. Harold before, but everybody who has a role, whether it's a safety video or all the other different videos we watch, if you can think about who's in charge of that particular department or division, those individuals took a hard look. And thank you to the board for helping me with providing the resources to my team and time so that we could ensure compliance of our employees, but at the same time reduce the amount of time. I believe those are all the public comments that I'm prepared to speak to this evening, sir.
Thank you. Let me ask the attorney first. Attorney Bruno?
I have nothing at this time.
Okay. Ms. Jordan has a question through the chair for the superintendent.
If I may. Just regarding transportation, and I know we received the list, and I think the biggest question was, especially for the Stars Complex, was that bus stop that was at Edison and Brown, which I see that it is there. So that's where there's the confusion, is that?
So that's one of the questions regarding the Stars Complex, clearly. But there are more questions than that. I have seen now an additional list, and I want to get with staff before I speak openly and ensure that we are utilizing all of the possible stops surrounding the Stars for the buses that normally would stop there. For parents who are concerned about other daycares, we're doing the same thing for other daycares, we're doing the same thing for other locations. We are getting our students within proximity and walking distance of those locations. We need to because we have a responsibility to get our students on time. So, Mrs. Jordan, I'll make sure I follow up with you and the entire board on that particular question.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is the approval of consent action items. The documentation for action items listed on the consent is made available to board members seven business days prior to the board meeting. We're expected to review all material, and we have had an opportunity to speak with the superintendent with any questions we may have regarding the recommendations. Some of these items have also been briefed and worked shop with the board in advance of appearing on the action agenda. Board members, is there any agenda items you wish to pull under unfinished business or tabled items? Mr. Fisher?
I have no said items.
Giavanelle?
I have none, thank you.
Ms. Patrica?
No, thank you.
Ms. Jordan?
I have none, thank you.
Ms. Lakeford Fleming?
I have none.
And Ms. Morgan?
I have none, thank you.
And I have none. Is there a motion to approve the agenda's consent action items? Ms. Jordan?
I move to approve the consent agenda items as written.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second. Morgan?
Ms. Morgan? It's been moved by Ms. Jordan and seconded by Ms. Morgan. Would you please record your vote? Next, we will be going to the good of the order and other business. Mr. Fisher, do you have any good of the order?
No, Chair, I do not.
Okay. Ms. Giavanelle?
I would just like to say that we approved tonight the MOU with the sheriff regarding the Guardian program, and I am excited to see that finally come to fruition. This has been a long process, and I'd like to thank the superintendent for leading that in that direction and getting this over the finish line, as well as the sheriff, Marcino, that also worked diligently together with staff to, and thank the staff that also worked very hard with the sheriff's department. And the graduation was exciting. I look forward to that, that program growing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Giavanelle. We will have time for board comments after the good of the order, if you have any additional ones. Ms. Jordan, do you have any good of the order? Ms. Lakeford Fleming?
I have none.
Ms. Morgan? Ms. Patrica?
Thank you. I move to direct the superintendent to use the media access form originally supported by staff and the Curriculum Advisory Committee until such time as the board can pass a media access policy.
Okay. Is there a second?
I second it.
Ms. Jordan? The motion to move the superintendent to use the media access form originally supported by the staff and Curriculum Advisory Committee until such time as the board can pass a media access policy was made by Ms. Chris Patrica and seconded by Ms. Jordan. Discussion. Patrica?
Thank you. I would beg your patience in terms of the length of my comments, given the fact that I wasn't here for the first time it was discussed. So my concerns lie in two areas. The first is the Constitution, and the second is policy, board protocols, way of work, superintendent lane versus board lane, et cetera. What I'm asking for really in this motion is time. We've really rushed through this and ended in a place that I believe is far more likely to lead to lawsuits filed against us. Aren't we doing things backwards here? Why is the board approving procedures? Why are procedures written, approved, and implemented before policies are created? Is it not supposed to be the other way around? At the briefing, the board was advised that additional direction from the board would come in the form of updating Policy 2522. Policy 2522 has nothing to do with media access. It is our book challenge policy. We have no media access policy. Approving this form without a policy cuts the public out of the process. There were no first and second readings and no widespread opportunity for public comment. I'm on the board, and I didn't even know that this was going to be a topic of discussion at the board until mere days before it was discussed. We have rules or ways of work that guide us for a reason. We get bad results when we don't follow them. So beyond the lack of policy, we exhibited a complete lack of consideration for the amazing work done by staff in conjunction with our Curriculum Advisory Committee, both of which supported a much simpler media access form. After each QAC meeting, Ms. Giavanelle reported back to the board about the wonderful work being done by QAC and staff. I watched those meetings, and I shared her enthusiasm. It was not easy work, for sure, but it was collaborative work, and it was good work. Those meetings included a ton of public comment. We got feedback from community, both at those meetings and in the boardroom. People on both sides of this issue came to us, praised the work of the committee, and agreed that, although not perfect in the sense that each individual person didn't get what they wanted, the form represented the best that we could do, given the confines of the law. Bottom line is that all stakeholders in that process felt heard. Despite the praise for the committee and the staff's work, the board met and abruptly changed the form. None of the reasoning of QAC was discussed. None of the reasoning of our professional, educated, certificated staff was discussed. Instead, we discussed protecting children. Some legal questions were posed, thank you, Mr. Fisher, but those questions were not answered at the briefing. I understand from a conversation today that one-on-ones were conducted with board members, but I was not privy to that. So I'm not laying blame, I'm just making an observation that those questions were not answered in the public. Had I heard a deep discussion about the First Amendment, how stigmatizing books can lead to a chilling effect on students' freedom to receive information, how restricting access to books on behalf of parents violates a parent's fundamental right to raise their children as they see fit, I probably would not be making this motion right now. My view of the Constitution is that of a strict constructionist who leans originalist. I believe in the words chosen by our founding fathers, "Who believed that we possess certain natural rights that are bestowed upon us by God, not government." Those fundamental rights are so precious that government should almost never interfere with them, even if the interference is perceived to be minute. Our first five rights, as laid out in the First Amendment, are at the very core of our freedoms. In the same way that the words "gun" and "control" should never appear in the same sentence, the words "book" and "restriction" should never appear in the same sentence. The board had lots of discussion about protecting students, but what about protecting students' rights? Logically, the best way to protect students from gun violence is to have stricter gun laws. Legally, that is not permissible if you believe in the Second Amendment. Logically, the best way to keep objectionable material out of the hands of children is to restrict access to books. Legally, that is not permissible if you believe in the First Amendment. So really, this is a question of where we as a board stand in terms of the spectrum of protection for the First Amendment. Do we want to take a permissive view or a restrictive view of the First Amendment? A restrictive view actually violates the Constitution because opting in will deny some students the opportunity to receive ideas and information. And it denies parents the right to decide whether their own children can receive ideas and information. The loss of First Amendment rights, even if it is minimal, is injurious. There are no Supreme Court cases on this point. If I may, through the chair, ask Attorney Tabby Bruno if there are any mandatory or persuasive cases that you have found on this topic.
Specifically, when you said there are no Supreme Court cases on this point, specifically explain that for me, please, so I can understand the question.
Library restrictions. I know Tinker gives us a good foundation, but I'm not sure that there's anything out of the Supreme Court on restricting books in libraries.
So there is a case.
Other than PICO, sorry.
That's the case I was going to cite. There is a case that's very specific. It's a plurality decision. However, it does specifically talk about removal of books from a school library and gives us some type of a legal test to follow. Of course, there is a whole line of First Amendment cases that start with Tinker. There's Hazelwood, there's all kinds of First Amendment cases. But I think what we always have to remember is First Amendment rights for students are different than First Amendment rights for adults, and the Supreme Court has made that very clear as well. In addition, I think one of the cases that's probably very helpful in the board's discussion is a case called Frazier versus Frazier, which is an 11th Circuit case, which is our Florida federal district case, and that is the case with regard to the Pledge of Allegiance. The statute says that a student can opt out from standing up and doing the Pledge of Allegiance, but it requires a parental consent to allow the student to opt out. That was brought forward on a First Amendment basis as well. And the court said, again, it's limited for students, and there's nothing wrong with having parental consent for this particular, if you want, abridgement, if you will, of the First Amendment. So that would be one case that I think is at least persuasive, especially as an 11th Circuit case, and of course, the guidance from PICO and all of the other First Amendment cases.
I appreciate that because I found a couple of cases that I also believe are persuasive out of the Western District of Arkansas and the Northern District of Texas. While those cases are not on all fours with the issue that we're facing here today, they certainly are about access to books and libraries, and those rulings made it very clear that restricting access to books, requiring parent permission, when a parent has already granted free access to library materials, are unconstitutional violations. And the flagging of books is an unconstitutional abdication of the board's responsibility to determine the accessibility of books. So the opt-in is the equivalent of flagging books. Because... Because some parents don't like books, all parents and kids have to be subjected to that objection? Through the approved form, we have flagged books based on three, maybe four people's objections. We have given no consideration to the educated, certificated professionals we employ, and the determinations they made regarding the appropriateness of these books were denying access to students based on the objections of a handful of people. A separate legal issue: what are the demographics of the students whose parents have not completed the forms in the past? Will we have a disparate impact lawsuit because those children are members of a legally protected group and were more impacted than other groups? Disparate impact is a civil rights violation. Another legal question: is it more, and I don't want the answers now, I'm just asking in general, is it more defensible to default deny access to materials that some may consider objectionable for younger children than it is for older children? To a point Mrs. Langford Fleming made, should we have different forms for primary and secondary? I'd like to see age-based solutions considered. Getting to my conclusion, Mr. Chair, I think everyone agrees that this was rushed. There was a sense of urgency with school starting. Everyone at the briefing and the workshop agreed that the language on the form is confusing. I just sent you all an email, if you have time to pull it up, with a screenshot of the form, so that you all can see what parents see when we try to access this thing on our phones. We can't even read the choices. You can only see the full text of each of the choices if you complete the form on a computer. Even then, the language is convoluted, confusing, biased, and far too technical. So my ask of the board is this: please let us stick with the form supported by staff and QAC. We at least had public comment on that form. Let us create a policy for media access rather than having staff justify the form's existence through policy 2522. In creating the policy, we can gain a better understanding of the constitutional implications. If the board wants to change what staff and QAC have already supported, bring those changes back to QAC, and have EDAC and DAC way in as well. By then, everyone on this newly-seeded board will have their appointees on those committees. We can also take some real time to educate parents about media access, what the form means, why it's necessary, et cetera. There are just too many red flags for me to feel comfortable with what we've done here, so let us take this opportunity for community input and stakeholder education, please. Those are my comments. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Brenner, Dr. Brenner, did you have a...
No, I just want to make sure that it's clear to the board members. The aspect of the movement from the form, from the internet on our computers to phones, was first brought up to me, I believe, day before yesterday or yesterday. It is a glitch. It is a program bug with Focus. We have contacted the CEO. The CEO has put their project team on this as a top priority. They know that we have a sensitive issue, but I want to make sure, because I know the board member brought it to my attention, and I want to make sure that the board had an update, that in the transfer of this to Focus in our phones, there is a text wrapping issue. It sounds simple for me to fix, right? You just click on an icon, and the text wraps, but it's not that simple. But I do want you to know we're working on a fix, because it won't matter. We have to get this fixed, no matter what those words say.
Right, and I did, the screenshot I sent you was from 10 minutes before the meeting, so that I could show that it hadn't been fixed, and how many thousands of parents have filled that out without knowing what it even says.
More discussion? Ms. Jordan?
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Patrica. I thought what you said was very good, very clear. I really appreciate what you said. I, as well, I was not one of the members that was here. I was out of town, and I was not sure why we were having this. I absolutely did request for it to wait until we were all here. Of course, that did not take place. Everybody went ahead and still had the conversation. I'm just not sure where we, how we got here. There was a form that was already, I did go back and I watched the tapes, the videos of the meetings, of the committee meetings as well, and public comments to figure out where, when we're saying at the meeting that this was all discussed, the conversation we had heard from public comments, we've talked about this for months. That is not the case. We have not talked about this form for months. The first time this form, that I heard about it, was when I start watching these meetings, so I'm not sure where the conversation came from or where I was at when the meetings were happening. And as far as the form, if we already had one, what was the purpose of us even bringing it up to change the way that that form even looked? They did the work, they got their information, staff took it back, and they did their jobs, their jobs. It is not our jobs to make their forms. It is not our jobs to do that. And I don't understand how we, where does it, where do we go from here? The next time we don't really like what the staff is doing, then we decide that we're going to go ahead and change or direct them, or direct the superintendent to direct his staff to do, that's not our job. And so where do we draw the line for that? I just, I believe that we should use the, I'm in favor of Ms. Patrica's motion.
Any other discussion? Ms. Morgan?
So, I do believe, I'm not going to even begin to address the legal issues. I just want to talk about the practical application and the things that we have done. Effectively, the board has micromanaged with respect to the form, but there is an essential question, and that is the opt-in, opt-out question. The unfortunate thing is that, frankly, it was poor management to bring this to the board just before the start of school, during a time of year when board members traditionally have organized time away for vacations, because that's the only opportunity we have. I think it was unfortunate that board members essentially said, by voting for three and not waiting for this conversation until the full board was seated, effectively, while I respect the fellow board members, there is nothing that they can tell me that will change my position. And that's really not how we work as a board on a really sensitive conversation or decision. So I just think, for a lot of practical reasons, process reasons, and for the sensitivity of this issue before us, we really need, as a board, to give this time for all of us to have a conversation. And I would support going back to the original form as approved, as recommended by the curriculum advisory committee, as brought to us by staff, based on their interactions with the committee, with community members. I think that's where we start. We start with the original form. If we want to engage in management of the district's process, then we're going to have to do it as a policy. That's the only way we can do it. So that's where I am. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I just want to say, too, this by no means, I totally believe in parental rights, and I say that all the time. We have never, as parents, grandparents, we've never lost our rights for our children. It is our rights, it is our responsibility to take care of our children. And so when, just the other day, when I was at the schools and they were talking, and just the parents that were telling them, you have to go on Focus, you have to do this, you have to do that, now they're like, I have to do what for my kids to read? So they were not understanding the whole process, because why can my child not read a book unless I fill out a form for them to be able to do that? What, why, what rights am I taking from them to be able to do that? So I just want to clarify that as well. So, thank you.
Mr. Fisher?
Thank you, and thank you, everyone, for the board, for the discussion. A couple of things. First off, as I indicated last time, as I said, it was not my intention, nor do I believe anyone else's board, to exclude anyone in this matter. So, and we went through a bit of that, the briefing. As I said, everyone's voice matters on this board, and I truly believe that. As I said last time, I felt at that time it was in our best interest to go forward with that. Maybe I was mistaken. Either way, as I said, that was not our intention. A couple of things. First off, when I was referencing that we'd been going over for months, I was talking about the policy, this policy we have been going over for months. That is what my reference to that was in that meeting, so I want to clarify that. Another thing from the workshop, I don't know, maybe I'm confused in my recollection, but I didn't believe we're asking for different wording in that workshop. I thought that was something that the administration had looked into in regards to that in order to clarify a couple of things on the form. That was my understanding. I don't remember us directing anyone in administration at point to change the language in that document, so. Couple of things, truly appreciate your legal mind, Ms. Patrica. As I said, I looked through, through a couple lenses. I looked through it as a parent. I looked through it as an attorney, but ultimately, I had to look through it as a school board member, because that's what my role is up here. As a parent, I absolutely sympathize with what you're saying, and my wife and I made our own choices on that form last week, in fact. And I agree with much what you're saying. However, in this instance, I don't, I believe that there is going to be less litigation in this way, especially how things are framed. I'd asked that question in regards to the chilling effect. I don't believe we are. I don't believe in this way that the government, us, is not restricting those rights, because it's a free and open and transparent choice and informed for the parents in this. It's not that we're saying that nobody can, and we're not going to the most restrictive means either. We're not saying no access at all to the fault. I think that if parents, as I said, we give them every opportunity for that. This is for the 1.9 percent we believe this will affect, and I hope it's not 1.9 percent. I hope it gets close to zero. I think that's where it should be at. But as I said, I don't feel a restricting in that manner. That's how I look at it as a school board member. As I said, I may look at it different as a parent, but in that, I believe that is what the best interest is for the school district and for the kids in that manner. And I did that analysis and looked through it. In regards, another thing, you mentioned cases, I believe, out of Arkansas and, was it?
Texas.
Texas. We also have to look at it, the difference that, I'm not familiar with the Texas Constitution or Arkansas, but here parental rights.
They were...
Okay, I know, but still, in accessing it, using the state, looking at what our state constitutions are, because they'll still look at that from a federal level, we still have to remember that parents' rights are fundamental in Florida. So that's another thing we have to take in that equation when we're looking at. At least, that's how I look at it. As I said, I, you know, I don't, I respect everyone's opinion on this, but as I said, I believe the decision I made and the decision I'll make again tonight is in the best interest of the kids in the district. I can make my own choice as a parent, so, thank you for this discussion.
Attorney Dupree Bruno?
I think it's important for us to really understand what the law is and this tension that is here with regards to First Amendment rights, as well as the school district or the school board's ability to control certain things within the schoolhouse, as well as the parents' rights. In addition to what Mr. Fisher said, there are Supreme Court cases that specifically talk about parents' rights, and that parents' rights actually trump students' rights. And that case is Washington versus Glucksberg, which is a well-known case from 1997, is a Supreme Court case. Now, on top of that, you add the federal, the Florida statutes, 1014, which is the Parents' Rights statute. And when we're talking about policies, we have policies that actually interpret that statute, 5780.01, which is our policy, which is the Parents' Bill of Rights policy based on Chapter 1014, which is very clear that the board has to recognize the right to direct the education and care of his or her minor child, which is what that Supreme Court case also says. In addition, it says that the right to direct the upbringing and the moral or religious training of his or her minor child. The board has to respect that. Again, that's part of the Supreme Court case, but this is also very specific to Florida, because this is a Florida statute. The other thing, I think what provides the ability for the administration to actually create this access form is part of the discussion of the entire challenge process to begin with, but in addition, we have other policies that I do believe allows the administration to do that. And again, it's coming from the Parents' Rights Policy, 578.01. Under Promoting Parental Involvement, subsection C, it states that parents will be able to object to instructional materials and other materials used in the classroom based on beliefs regarding morality, sex, and religion, or the belief that such materials are harmful. The school board, or I shouldn't say the school board, but the administration did not create forms that will not allow students to have access to materials. I think they erred on the side of caution, that these materials have been challenged, whatever reason that they have been challenged. Parents, you have the ultimate right to educate your child and direct their upbringing, so you decide and you tell us whether or not you want your child to have access to this material. That's based on policy, and that's based on Florida statute, and that is also based on a Supreme Court case. I also wanted to just clarify, because I said Frazier versus Frazier. It's Frazier, and then the parent was also listed as Frazier, but it's actually against win, so I want to make sure that's clear. There's another Supreme Court case, which is Eberson versus Arkansas from 1968, and this is a fundamental U.S. Supreme Court case as well, because this case specifically says, "School Board, you are ultimately," or "local authorities, you are ultimately responsible for what is happening in your schoolhouse from curriculum, from other things that relates to the education of students." So this case lays a foundation for a lot of the other decisions that we make. So yes, I agree, there's a tension between First Amendment of students' rights as well as parents' rights, but I think the court, as well as our Florida statute, does make it clear that parents' rights will trump students' rights in those instances. And that's what the, that's what the form does, really, just asking parents to tell us what you want us to do.
Thank you. Ms. Leck Fleming? We'll come back to you, Ms. Morgan.
So first of all, it makes, it makes me sad that this is even a topic when it's regarding books, but that's where we're at. That's where we're at in the world, and there is nothing that we can do about it other than stand up and continue to talk about it, educate, and bring awareness to the topic, just like anything else that's going on with our children right now regarding movies that are inappropriate and social media. So I have to look at this form as a board member, but even if I'm looking at it as a teacher, as a parent, as a board member, I believe that the parents do know what's best for their child. We need to make sure, as a district, that we are educating all the parents to, in every single way, I guess I heard today that a commercial, or I'm going to call it a commercial, even though it's not what it is, but a piece has been put out that does educate parents on what this form is, what it entails, and I think as a district, we have to do everything we can to get the word out, educate parents what this form is and why we are having to have it. I look, I thought about when children go into taking health courses in school. A parent has the right to say, "I do not want my child to take this class." And it can be when they're 17 or when they're 10. They have that right to opt out of that class, or if there is an opt-in form, to take whichever way it is, but that is the parent's obligation. I appreciate and respect all the opinions on the board. I apologize last meeting for, you know, moving ahead. I kind of do feel that we had had enough conversations at that point, and I'm sorry that we weren't all here together, because I learned so much from each one of you, so I appreciate that part. Regarding Mr. Fisher's comment about protecting and less litigation, I do feel that this form protects the board more than anything I have seen, more so than the other form regarding that. So when I, when I look at this form, I think about all the children of Lee County, what their precious little eyes would see, read, or hear from someone else, and I would rather take every single measure to be safe than sorry. And that's, those are my comments.
I have a question for the attorney. Hold on one moment. On the original form, the first choice, "My child has full access with no limitations for checkout from the school or the median center." Literally, that would mean any kindergarten could check out any high school book. You know, and that was not the original intention, to my understanding, and they clarified that to the way it is written now. We did not ask to change that, and that was really not... We did not ask to change that, and that was really not changed. It just was misworded as far as clarity. And then the last one was just, rather than just saying any challenged books, they said, they just clarified that a little bit. So as Mr. Fisher said, they really did not change the form. The only change was the opt-in or opt-out situation, to my understanding. Is that correct, other than some wording?
That is correct. With regards to the first form, language was pretty blanket that my child would have access to any media materials. However, there was some confusion as we started to get feedback as to what does that mean. Clearly, if a book has been restricted because of age or grade level, your child would not have access to that book. If a book was restricted because it required parental consent, your child would not have access to that book. So that's why that was clarified in the form, to make sure that everybody understood that.
Okay. I just want to make sure because the public seemed to think that we totally changed that first line, and that was really never the intention of this form from everything I've been able to tell, heard. Ms. Giovinelli.
Excuse me?
Oh, you have follow, I'm sorry. Did you have a follow-up on that, Ms. DuPape?
I have something when we're finished. I have something with regards to the legal exposure I wanted to mention.
That's fine. Ms. Giovinelli, and then I'll come back to you.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry. She hasn't spoken, I forget about that.
Thank you. So it was mentioned, you know, how do we get here? Well, I think it's really important that Tallahassee made a law because there were inappropriate books throughout our district, not district, actually the state. And the governor had to step in and make sure that students were being protected and making sure that parents' rights were not being infringed on. And that is really what we're talking about. We're talking about giving the power back to the parents and protecting all students. I think it's really important because boards were not doing that, school boards were not doing that, and districts were not doing that. So this is not book banning. We have not banned one book. It's going through a process. The process is not going to change, but it makes, it's bringing awareness and for parents, because parents aren't reading these books. Parents aren't aware of it. You don't know what you don't know. So I think it's important, it takes a village, and this is part of the village's work. And I respect the whole process, the whole curriculum advisory, they worked very hard in bringing the processes and the steps forward, working with the community as well as the educators making those decisions and bringing it to our attention. July 1st is when the law went into play. This was not rushed, we knew, and now the law is in place. So we have to, we have a duty and a responsibility to protect and stand by the laws. And we don't pick and choose which laws we're going to protect or advise or determine what is best for anyone. There's the parental rights, and we're going to stand strong with those, and this form actually just puts the power back to the parents. There's nothing wrong with that. And there are some parents that sometimes don't, may not sign this form. I have every confidence in the superintendent that he's going to make sure, and that they're going to make sure that all parents seize this form, understands the form, and signs it appropriately for what's best for them and their student, not up to this board to make that decision. I'm going to, as a board member, it's my duty to make sure that I follow the law and the laws from the governor, and I appreciate his efforts in putting this in place to make sure that we're doing our job. And that's really what's, the bottom line here, and is we need to do our job. And I appreciate this board making sure that we're following the law. Thank you.
Ms. Morgan.
So I would make the point that we, in fact, did give the superintendent direction because we did change from an opt-out to an opt-in. We directed the superintendent to change from an opt-out to an opt-in position. I would also say, having heard what the board attorney has said, that we've probably not provided the curriculum advisory or staff with appropriate legal information when they were acting in the whole process of working through what our procedures would be and what the access forms would be. Because essentially, what we're saying is that they've made their recommendations, and now we're telling them the recommendations really weren't valid because, according to our legal department, they do violate. If we act on it as originally proposed by the committee and by staff, we may be in violation of law. So, you know, really, we have learned a lot from this process, and we clearly have not done our work as a board and as an administration in providing the appropriate support, you know, for people who are acting as our advisors. Final thing I would say is that when it comes to an educational piece, you all saw the email from a parent about the Guardian program. You know, she's saying, "Gosh, I didn't know anything about the Guardian program. Is my child going to have a teacher who's a Guardian? Is the Guardian going to be wearing a shirt?" So we sent out an educational piece and didn't provide the most basic information to parents. And I'm concerned about how we go about providing an educational piece on this that is, that both educates and leads parents where they need to be. So, you know, I'm just saying that, I'm just kind of concerned about how we got here and what kind of thinking we need to bring to future significant decisions that we have to make as a board with respect to process. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Ms. DuPape Bruno.
I think there needs to be some clarity because the legal advice that was rendered to staff throughout this entire process, and the legal department has been working very closely with academic services for months since we knew that HB 1069 was going to come, has been very sound. There's nothing that has changed in the process. The only thing that we're talking about is the language on a form for accessing materials, and there's nothing with regards to the board's choice for the first document or the second document that really is a change in legal advice. It is the same legal advice. I sent an email to the board. You know that this form is not required by statute. We had one-on-ones with the board that specifically talked about the exposure and the legal analysis and potential defenses if we were to have a First Amendment violation. This was all discussed with every single board member. In addition, I explained the PICO case, which is the U.S. Supreme Court case that talks about book challenges and removals and what the board would have to look to if there was to be an appeal. So there is no change in the legal recommendation. It's still the same legal recommendation. The issue is the board's decision in terms of what it directed the superintendent to include or not include on a form, and that is up to the board to decide. This is not a legal thing for the board to decide in terms of what is to be on the form. I can tell you, the form insulates us a little bit better. I said that, I think I said that in public. If I didn't, I know I said it in certain conversations I had. Definitely, it does provide us with a little bit more insulation, for sure. So I just wanted to make sure that was cleared. In addition to the PICO case, we also have a Florida case, which is a middle district case, not a 11th Circuit case, which also supports, and I think I'll just read a portion of this case because I think it's important. This was with regards to a particular textbook that the board had removed, and there was a, students were concerned that their First Amendment rights had been violated, and the court said, "The parties do not dispute that the curriculum decision of the school board in this case was based on the board's own standards regarding sexuality and vulgarity. Although the court wishes that the board had imposed its standards in a manner less restrictive of speech, the court recognizes that the board retains broad discretion under our constitutional system in dealing with such potentially sensitive topics." So even the court in that particular decision indicates that there are different ways you can go about it. It could be more restrictive or less restrictive, but it still supported the school board in its decision to remove this particular textbook.
Ms. Jordan, and then I'll make a final. That's okay.
I just want to get clarification because, one, we have not, nor have we ever violated the law. Okay, so I just want to make sure because that was.
That's my job, make sure that we don't.
Okay, because I was hearing as if perhaps we were doing that by not having this form. And the form is something that was an option for us, for staff that they put together. We did not have that, nor did we actually need that per law, because we are still abiding by the Parents' Rights Bill, just law in general. I just want.
Correct. The form came about as a recommendation from the Curriculum Advisory Committee.
Okay. And then my other concern is because we know that even our student handbooks, and this is a conversation we always have, our parents, we do not get enough parents signing that. And I guess, when are we going to look to see what the outcome would be of how many parents or how many children, how many parents did not sign that, as we found in the handbooks, even just our handbooks that were not signed by the parents? So, and then my last and final thing is, in kindergarten, that comment about kindergarten and high school, we would not have high school books, please, through the chair, to superintendent, we would not have high school books in an elementary school, correct?
Right. K-8.
There are different collections for each appropriate grade level, so you would not have high school textbooks in an elementary school library. There is the appropriate collection for a K-5 or pre-K-5, a K-8, a middle school, and a high school.
Okay, thank you. And the kids would not be checking out, kindergarten's not going to be checking out an eighth-grade book, correct?
There's the possibility in a media center, in a K-8 environment, that there could be a book that would be eligible for eighth grade. I don't know why a kindergartner would check it out, but there is the possibility that eighth-grade book could be checked out by a kindergartner. I don't want to use any other words.
Got you. Thank you.
I just want to stop there with a period.
I appreciate it. Okay. No, I just wanted that clear because when I'm sitting here and I keep hearing about, you know, we just, we are abiding by the law, and the governor gave us, you know, had to do this for us to have the law, we understand that laws have been passed, and when the laws have been passed, the first thing we do is our attorney looks at that, gets out of that, and make sure that we all understand what we can and cannot do, so we are always adhering to the law in any case. So I just, you know, when I hear that, it just drives me crazy because I know that's what we do here. And then, and then the change, what, the change on the final version also said that the child is not permitted to check out books from the school media that have been formally challenged and reviewed for potential objectable materials regardless of outcome. So we go through all this process for so many hours, manpower, man-hours, to do and read all these books to see if, whether or not that they are going to be permitted back into the, to be read or not, but now we're saying that regardless. So I don't, that to me is, why are we even going through the process then? Just, that's it.
Question for the attorney. The first option, if we had no access form, that would be the first option. Am I correct?
When you say no access.
I said, if we didn't have this form at all.
Yes.
What it says in the first option would be for everybody.
Correct.
Okay, I mean, even though the wording changed, that is the truth. Okay, so the first option doesn't really come into play there. The last one, books that have been challenged, the process, once they've been challenged and they go through the ad hoc committee, that's not the end of it. It can then be challenged to us, then challenged to a special magistrate, and then to the state school board, which is a lot of time for all of us, not that I don't mind looking at something because there's going to be books that come to us, a lot of money, because we're responsible for the special magistrate. By having this option for someone, the parent has the final say. I mean, the thing I like about this form is that if a parent chooses the first option, they have as full access as possible. There is no book that they cannot get, that they would not be able to get if there were no form. That's sort of my point there. So they have that option, so there's no restriction for any parent who signs this form to any book that they're entitled to have. So that's, first off, I don't see any problem there. And if a parent doesn't want their child to check out any books, that's also an option. I have no problem with that. And the one we have here, it just puts a little red flag because some parents may not sign the form, and there may be a book that they don't want their child to read, or they may want their child to read. They would be notified, and then they can check it and say, "Oh, I don't know why that was ever challenged," or, "Boy, I'm glad my child did not bring that book home to read." I probably, to be honest with you, I probably myself might check the first, I'd be sort of in between the two, because I like to look at the books when my kids were in school, so I would know what they're reading. But I'd probably check the default one personally, just because there might be some time I didn't or something, I just would want to know. But that's going to be up to each parent. But I think this form does not in any way restrict a child from checking out a book unless their parent says they can't check out the book, because they'll be notified if they want to check out the book on the default. And that's the way it is. So I like this form, and I think we should stay with it. That's my opinion. All right, I think we need to have a public opinion now, comment, I mean. So I would ask how many people would like to comment on this? If you would, I was going to ask you to stand, but the hands are fine. Okay. Comment time will be three minutes. If you would like to line up and come up one at a time. If Ms. DuPape Bruno doesn't mind me doing that. But just please state your name again, just for people that might be watching or whatever.
And Mr. Chairman, if I may, I heard a couple of things in the prior public comment that was kind of close to crossing the line in terms of some of our public speaking rules regarding, you know, making derogatory comments about groups and things of that nature. So I would ask that we be respectful to each other. I know this is a hot topic, and there's a lot of opinions, but everyone has the right to have their opinion, and we have been listening to you and trying to find that middle ground. And I know that Mr. Chairman and I do not want to cut speakers off. We want everybody to have their full say, but we do ask that you please respect the rules and respect each other when you're speaking.
Thank you.
Well, don't start it yet. Okay. In CK v. Wentzville School District in Missouri, while it's not a U.S. case, or a U.S. Supreme Court case, it did cite PICO. And PICO states that the local school board has the authority to remove school library books it considers to be vulgar or lacking in educational suitability. In the Missouri case, the judge sided with the school district, and it was not a violation of any student's First Amendment rights. These decisions don't appear to address the state authority on this issue, rather they appear to defer to the authority of elected local school boards. However, it seems reasonable that state law rule or policy may set parameters for local school districts to use to help them determine whether a book is vulgar or lacks educational suitability. Insert 1069. This is now the law, and the books that are being removed violate the law. I'm not quite sure what's so confusing about it. The media center form, I filled it out on Friday. It was easy. I selected that my child cannot read any books that have been objected to, because she has personally come to me and said, "Mom, I'm sick and tired of choosing books that have graphic content." And the books that we've challenged have graphic content pre-1069, so they're still able to be read and have easily accessibility to, excuse me. So we, I listened to her, I listened to my student, and she can no longer access that material. There's nothing wrong with the form. The form is great. I appreciate it. You're protecting parental rights, you're protecting students, and, there was one more thing. Oh, there is absolutely no book that contains. Oh, there is absolutely no book that contains sexual content to minors and contains literary value.
My name is Rosemary McBride, and with all due respect, board members, are you listening to the motion that Board Member Patrika has placed before you this evening? This is not the time to argue about the pros and cons of the law or the form. It's about process. This board has processes that it is legally required to follow. By what the board has done in that workshop, you've not followed your own process. For my professional career, I was a lawyer for a company that designed, manufactured, and maintained nuclear submarines for the United States Navy. We had a process and a procedure for everything under the sun. It was the times that we failed to follow our own processes that we had in writing that we got in legal trouble. That was the, that was the hook that a lawyer would get his hands into to sue us. Chris Patrika is trying to get you to understand that this motion is about process. This is a do-over. Who amongst us has not made a mistake? I think it is the mature, responsible, adult thing for you all to realize that that's what's at stake here. Own up to this mistake, hit the reset button, go back, do it the way it was supposed to have been done, and let the chips fall where they may. And I have to tell you, as a constituent of District 3, I feel disenfranchised because you did not afford my board member the opportunity to represent me at that workshop. It also feels, in spite of all of the campaign rhetoric and ostensible odes to transparency that you all sing the praises of, that this was not a transparent transaction whatsoever. So I think you really ought to listen to what Board Member Patrika is trying to do here tonight, and follow and agree with her motion. Thank you.
My name is Kathy Horn. I live in Estero. My word for the month is dismayed at what has happened with this form. I understand that you have talked about the whole policy of book challenges for months, but you have only talked about this form for the last couple of weeks. And I'm dismayed by what appears to be a purposeful, politically-driven intent to schedule a meeting when two of your board members couldn't be here. And it's one thing now, and you know that those two board members would probably oppose what you were bringing up. It's one thing for some of you now to say, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to do that, oops. It's another thing to make amends, and to make amends for the apology, for the, with the apology is to do what Board Member Patrika has suggested. Step back from this thing that has created so much consternation in the last two weeks and rethink what you're doing. And have the full discussion with the full board. Secondly, in terms of this form specifically, if you, if you have the heartfelt belief, and I agree with you, and I'm not challenging any of that, that a parent has a right to stop or to challenge a book and not have their child read that book, it would be hypocritical of you not to say that another parent has the same right to say, my child can read a book that's been challenged. And with all due respect to Mr. Persons, you've said, I think, tonight, if I understood you correctly, the form wasn't changed, but the form was changed, we wouldn't all be here tonight. And the form, the important part of the form that was changed was the part that said, I want my child to be able to read everything. So if you have a parent who can say, I don't want my child to read some books, you have to allow parents to say, I want my child to read every book. And you have to have respect for both that, both sides of that discussion. And last thing, I've been watching board meetings for five years since I moved here, and the first four of those years were nightmare years of, of backroom maneuvering, lies. You guys know some of it, I'm sure you know most of it. For the past year, you guys have been doing visibly to the, to us, a great job of transparency and collegiality and discussion and work until these last two weeks. And I would ask you to return to what you have been doing for this past year. Give everybody a chance to have their say in your board meetings and reconsider what's been going on with this form. Thank you.
I've appreciated the conversation here tonight, but I think we have to think about what you're addressing. You're addressing something that the community has been involved in for months. We spent hours, and very happy hours, and your staff had developed a process around that statute that is by far one of the best in the state. You admitted tonight, you made some mistakes. First of all, the document should probably never have been brought to the briefing and asked for direction. But sometimes we say words that we maybe have two connotations. Also at that meeting, you voted, and you're not devoted to meeting. Thumbs up, thumbs down, in my opinion, is voting. And both your attorney and your superintendent knows that. I think you've had two board members ask tonight, let's, let's follow the process, which we have so appreciated since you've been aboard. You have made us feel welcome and heard and respected. And I hope we've respect, you know that we respect you, the work you do as a board and the work the superintendent does. But fair and honesty is important. You have two board members that said, we weren't part of that process, and we represent thousands of parents. Please, think about that. And let's make, we all make mistakes, I've made many in my lifetime, but if you have a chance to rectify it, do it. Give those board members a chance to have an opinion. Just table it or take it back for discussion. If you come up with the same results, fine, you won't hear another word from me, but let's give everyone an option. And this is all about kids, and this is all about parent rights, which we all agree on. So let's ride around, okay? Thank you.
Frank Mamonie here. I wanted to just thank and appreciate the prior work with the ad hoc committee and the curriculum committee. We sat in some of those meetings, but we didn't comment, and I kind of wished maybe I commented back then, it was some months ago, but I appreciate the work, and you could see how much activity was going on there, so I just wanted to throw that out there. I do appreciate the information from the legal aid. Thank you. With a child and parent prayer, child and parental rights are a tension, and it's true, it is. But favoring parents is good to know, and good to know that we have that. Also appreciate the legal input, going to a more insulating position to cover the board and cover Lee County. I think that's, that's good. And if the new, like, quote-unquote, safer may be the default position, it seems like a more, a better position overall, instead of saying, well, it's open this way, but it's closed, and you can choose that way. I think the new form is good. And again, I appreciate the move to a new form. I think it's safer in the long run. And if students want a book that happens to be flagged and they can't get, then they can ask their parent to get the book if they think they need to read that book. I think if the overall majority are saying, no, we don't want these books, then it should be like that. And basically, if, if the student wants it that bad, they can talk to their parent, and they can get that separately. So that's my comment. And again, thank you for the work. I know it's been difficult, last, the last few months we were in there, there was a lot of, a lot of input, and we do appreciate all the work, so thank you.
Earlier today, Board Member Patrika said that, to the best of her recollection, she does not make motions. That is a bold-faced lie, so I went back to find proof. It didn't take me too long either. On May 25th, 2021, at an action meeting during board member comments, Patrika wanted a writing sample from all applicants for the interim superintendent position. So during board member comments, the first thing she did was try to circumvent the community's right, covered by the First Amendment, by trying to reach a consensus on this writing sample. After board discussion, Attorney Bruno suggested that Patrika make a motion instead of a consensus. After that, it was open for a public comment and voted on. This was only a little over two years ago. Ms. Patrika, you are a master manipulator, and while the newly-elected board members may not know everything that happened in the past, we do, and we'll continue to share the story accurately when you fail to do so. This is a pretty big can that this board member is trying to kick down the road. I implore you to do as she would do to you if this were any one of you right now, and hold the line. Also, it's a violation of House Bill 1069 for schools to expose children to sexual conduct, and yet there are numerous school libraries that, as of today, contain books with such content. I personally have challenged 15 books so far that break the law at my daughter's school. If we were following the law to the letter, those books wouldn't be there to begin with. I will finish by saying this, she, my student, my rights, not yours.
I'm going to start by saying this entire process I'm going to be pointing to in a few years is a masterclass of why involving the government in anything is a lesson in inefficiency. Because my parents, when they don't want me to read something, just smacked me on the head with it and said, don't read this anymore if you know what's good for you. That being said, ideas are powerful things, and once the genie comes out of the bottle, you don't put it back in. Or as my grandfather used to say, some ideas are like a fart in an elevator. And not everybody appreciates being exposed to that. When we have the students, it's probably going to be best for their individual well-being if there's an idea their parents don't feel they're yet ready to be exposed to, to have it delayed long enough to check with the parent first. We're not saying they can never read that book, just we have to check with the parent. And they can still go around their parents' bags and read it online, or at the public library, or anything else. Furthermore, it's not just the current topic of dragons and such things being in the books that we're really dealing with. There's a lot of ideas out there that we really don't want our kids exposed to, and we already recognize that in the restrictions. You know, all of us, every single one of us, should read the notebooks the combine shooters left behind to really understand the mentality of those kids. But none of us want an angry 16-year-old to read that, because they will find justification for anything they want to do. There's a time and a place and a literary value for many different things. I brought with me a couple of books, one for each side of the debate, that we probably don't want kids to read in school. In one hand, I have one of the ideas in here. Even devoted scientists, philosophers, won't talk about the ideas in this book. They're that toxic, that dangerous to their careers to speak about. On the other hand, this book was a huge controversy when it came out. Looking at this, do any of you, especially given the commentaries you've made about your own beliefs, want to have your kid have access to this book? They might not necessarily be in our schools, but there are books that have those same ideas too, which is part of why this challenge form and the challenges made to the books need to have enough details for parents to make good decisions about what's being challenged. So not only is your form not only proper and appropriate in its current form, but they should have access to more information. Because a book that says the bell curve, sounds like you're studying statistics and learning how to, you know, look at standard deviations. The other ideas in that book aren't told just by the title. It needs to have a summary explaining why you might not want to have your child reading that book, the same as these other books, such as I'm Proud to Be Me. Thank you.
I need about 15 minutes. Based on Ms. Patrika's comments, it leaves me questioning whether we're even looking at the same process document. Restrictions are everywhere. You can't just go to the media center and pick up a Playboy magazine. Things have been restricted since as long as there's been schools. It's where the restriction is drawn, it's where the line is drawn that we're talking about today. As far as this seeming rushed, there's a perfectly logical explanation. I've been waiting for over a year on an official appeal of several books. That wasn't yesterday. It's been over a year. What's delayed my appeals is the laws that were potentially coming. And the district could not do anything with my appeals until the laws were ratified and came into being, July 1st. Then what happened was the school year was going to start. You could see the perfect storm coming. I saw it coming six months ago. This is not a rush job. This is just the way it worked out. The original form was not written by the board, nor was it approved by the board, and it didn't work. I proved it to each one of you. It did not work. This form, the one that was proposed and given to the board on that workshop, if you look at that form and the form that's on the website today, there is virtually no difference. There's some clarifying languages. The only real difference is the thing that's sticking in some of y'all's crawls, and that is that a child is protected ultimately if his parent doesn't fill out the form to open up everything. There was not a vote, there was a consensus. That happens all the time. I've seen it numerous times. And the reason there was a consensus is because they were up against the wall timing-wise. Why would the superintendent present something that he knew the board was going to disapprove? It's better to get a consensus to know how to direct your staff. That's very professional, that's exactly what he did. No child, no child is being kept from reading anything. I know parents and teachers personally that applaud this vigorously. I did a parental, a public records request, and I found out a book called The Hate U Give, with the F-word in it 90 times, with the N-word in it multiple times, is in an elementary school. It was challenged. It's far as I know, the challenge, the ad hoc committee did not remove it from that elementary school. That's why we need protections for challenged materials, for cases just like that. There's 102,000 book titles out there. You can't possibly know what they all are. Thank you.
Thank you for the comments, y'all. The motion is before us that we're going to vote on. It says, I move to direct the superintendent to use the media access form originally supported by staff and the curriculum advisory committee until such time as the board can pass a media access policy. This will be a roll call vote. Mr. Fisher?
No.
Mrs. Giavennelli?
No.
Mrs. Patrika?
Yes, please.
Ms. Jordan?
Yes.
Ms. Langford Fleming?
Nay.
Ms. Morgan?
Yes.
And I am a nay. The motion fails four to three. Next is board members' comments and reports. We'll start with Ms. Morgan.
I have nothing. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Langford Fleming?
I really don't have anything other than wishing all of our staff and students a wonderful start to the school year. Thank you for all of the hard work that they have all put in. The open houses have looked amazing, and I know all of the hours that they, they put in behind the scenes on Saturdays and, and whenever the, whenever the principal lets them in the building, they are there. So just hoping, and, and I personally am praying for a safe and healthy school year for everyone. That's all.
Ms. Jordan?
I feel like I've said a lot already. I just, again, I wish everybody the best school year. I will be stopping by the schools and visiting, and hopefully making sure that everyone that I speak to goes in and makes sure that they fill out their focus so that their child does have the opportunity to, to receive the books that their parents wish they, that they will do.
Ms. Patrika?
Yeah, I just want to thank the board genuinely for the conversation, including me in the conversation- me in the conversation, and just really allowing me to vote my conscience, so thank you very much for that. If I may, through the chair, to Dr. Bernier, I had to step out at the beginning of your comments after public comment, so I don't know what you said about Alba, but it's my understanding you're going to bring sort of a briefing within a briefing on that property to the board. When you do so, could you please include information about utilities, specifically the water comment tonight, and then traffic study, I assume we're doing one, or we will have some kind of information surrounding traffic presented to the board at that time, I would appreciate it. Those are my comments.
Mr. Chair, Ms. Patrica will be happy to add that to the presentation, I believe some of that material has already been included, but we'll ensure it.
Ms. Giavennelli?
Thank you. I said some comments earlier, and I'll just reiterate it really quick, that I'm glad the MOU with the Guardian program was on this agenda tonight, and I'm really supportive of that, and I was very excited to see the MOU with Sheriff Marcino, and I just wanted to thank Sheriff Marcino and his staff that trained the Guardians, as well as the superintendent that led, was the leader in this, and driving this over the finish line with his staff. And so I just appreciate all of that. I also attended a couple of open houses yesterday, was yesterday Monday, yes, with my grandkids, and I also visited some schools, because I always pass out, like, I take snacks for the teachers and this and that for their week. And we had actually a great time at the Villas, because apparently the Villas has chickens, and my grandson was infatuated. We went there to see the turtle, that one of the teachers has a turtle, and my grandson loves turtles, but I think he was more infatuated with the chickens and the egg that was not in the nesting box. And if anybody ever has opportunity, I don't even know how many chickens there they had, roosters and hens, and, I mean, there's a lot. And it was, it was actually really, they fed them, and my grandson didn't want to leave, and we had to get to his open house. So, and that was actually probably their favorite school, other than Southwood Myers High School, that was their other favorite school, because there's some kind of a marble arm that Mr. Matthews has in his office that my grandson wanted to take home. And that was a whole nother, but we had a great time, they were my helpers, and it was, actually, I'm going to do that again, because we had a great time doing that. I did want to bring this up really quick, because I am concerned, because there were some questions about, we didn't follow the process, and I thought we did follow the process, I'm, so I'm confused on that. Also, July 31st was always a meeting planned, and on our calendar for months, so it was on my calendar. And so I made a point, I was out of town, and I made a point to be back on the 31st, and so that is our duty in, to make sure that we make the meetings. Sometimes we can't, but, and that's understandable, we can't stop progress, and we can't stop, school was starting on the 8th, I mean, on the 10th, and the superintendent was concerned over waiting until the 8th to make that determination on that form. So, but I don't believe we rushed it, I believe this was a process that was long, ongoing, and a very long and thorough process. I think that it was tweaked, we did not make up the document, the document was made up at the curriculum advisory. I attended that meeting, and most of it was, the document is what they did, other than we tweaked a couple of verbiage, because it was a lot of words, it was a lot, it was very wordy. And so I'm confident in the process, I'm confident in the outcome and how we got here today, and I appreciate this board and the conversation that we had, and we did listen to the community, but I think it's important to make sure that we protect parents' rights and students' rights in protecting children. And if one book that was challenged wasn't appropriate and gets in the wrong hands, then that becomes, it's our responsibility to make sure that we are making sure that we're doing our jobs, and this protects us liability-wise. So I'm confident in the process again. And I hope all the teachers and staff has a wonderful school year. I'm excited about the 2033-24 school year, and I look forward to working towards what's best for students. Thank you.
Mr. Fisher?
Just going to echo my fellow board member comments, just want to wish students, staff, teachers, an amazing first day and an amazing year, and as parents, I'm excited to see them go back as well, so thank you.
All right. I just want to mention two graduations last week. We had the Guardian graduation, our first group of Guardians, that's very exciting, we're going to have more safety in our schools. And especially the group of students who did not graduate in May due to some curriculum, you know, they were short in credits, but they persevered through the summer, and they graduated, and it was awesome, they were wearing all their robes and caps, their gowns and caps, I should say, and their principals were there, and several board members were there, and also the Guardian graduation. So those were two really nice graduations, they got all the honors they should have, received their diplomas. Board Attorney Breno, do you have any comments?
I don't, thank you.
Mr. Superintendent?
Just a couple, sir. I think, thank you for the sentiments for a great opening, I've been speaking with principals, staff, attended some open houses yesterday, middle school was tonight. We are aware that some air conditionings weren't working in certain schools, and Mr. Stevens is already all over it and on top of it, we will have those things working. And I do want the board to understand, especially for new board members for their first opening, Michael Ramirez, our chief of staff, operates an emergency operations center over the first three, two to three days of school, that will begin as early as, believe it or not, 4:35 a.m. As our principals go in and key in, if there's any type of issues, our facilities and maintenance department is ready for rapid deployment in order to try to get air conditioning and cooling going, just in case we don't have something on the first day of school. I will tell our community, and we put out PSAs related to this, we are really focused this year, and I'm thankful to the sheriff, all of our mayors and our police chiefs who participated, about walking safely, biking safely, and driving safely to ensure our students' safety. Nothing more important, this community needs to know that nearly 100,000 students will be out on Thursday, moving about the community, school buses will be present, flashing red lights, you will be running late, you will get behind a school bus, it is just the way it works. So please, 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 make sure you obey those traffic conditions and wait, you can get there safely, and we want our students to get there safely as well. We will work on the first days of school to work through all particular issues or anything that develops. We appreciate the work that our team has done regarding transportation. I can share with you, as an update to the transportation situation, there was a specific question asked of me, I have the information, Edison and Brown is a stop for one of our elementary schools? The question becomes, are all of our elementary schools going to stop at that same spot? They are not. The bus stops for our elementary schools regarding the Stars Center are, one is 1,000 feet from the front door, that's for Allen Park, one is 400 feet for Edgewood, one is 1,300 feet, and one is 110 feet away from the front door. Our children will be dropped off in very close proximity to the Stars program, and we're excited that we think we've also found a solution for Ray V. Portoff and for Colonial as well. And thank you to the Stars program and the director you met this evening for her hard work. Just one thing about summer graduation, it was an amazing experience. Want to really thank the board members who were still there when the graduate who arrived late, and we got a chance to graduate a graduate of one, and to Clayton Simmons, who just was the perfect master of ceremonies, everything from her assistant principal handing her diploma, all the way through the cap toss. She experienced a one-on-one graduation like none other, and I think we got her mother slightly out of the doghouse, it was her mom's issue about being able to get there on time. The other thing I think is important to note is the work done for that graduation. This board had a vision and directed me very early on to find a manner and means with which to open an Acceleration Academy. Our first five graduates from Acceleration Academy crossed that stage this past weekend, actually four, one chose not to come, but we have five additional graduates that we wouldn't have had without that additional service. So I wanted to thank the board for your leadership in that area. I also want to thank the board today for your action. Today, you approved the contractual relations with PCG and the Science of Reading, the Public Consulting Group and the UF Lassinger Center. We're doubling up on our work for K-2 reading with these programs. The work is with our teachers, not to them, they are being utilized, and their voice is being brought into the process as we work to develop the tools we need to change the academic needle regarding reading achievement in K through 2 and impact that very important grade-three reading standard was mentioned earlier today. Want to know that our after-school programs are up and running in our elementary schools. In some cases, I've heard from parents about the additional costs. We did set a minimum level in order to be able to afford our teachers and our other staff members to do that, but in other cases, I've heard from parents being very thankful for the reduction in cost. They're no longer spending the amount of money they were spending in the past, because our elementary school principals came together to make this determination. There are some wait lists developing, but I have to credit Human Resources again for their hard work. They have established a pool of fingerprinted young people, including some of our high school students who are eligible to work after school in these programs, so we will be trying to get every human being possible into our schools to eliminate those wait lists. Because our teachers, quite honestly, they put in a hard day's work, sometimes staying after school every day is not really in their desire, so we want to make sure we found other opportunities, we're also working with our local universities to track talent there as well. I do think some of our systems are paying off, I would like to report tonight that we're 100% staffed, we are not, we are at 95%, we're still looking for about 220 teachers. Last year, at this exact time, we were looking for 200, but I would remind everybody, we have two new school buildings and one additional wing at Lamb's, that meant we needed more teachers than we've ever needed in the past, and yet HR is somehow managing to find the 5,546 we need. Our bus drivers are also in better supply this year, we are still short, but no longer at 181 on this very date, but at 67 instead. I mentioned the presentation for NN and OO and the conversation attached to the strategic capital plan, so I'll make sure that that happens. We are also going to be putting out later this evening, or first thing tomorrow, communication about the current heat that our students are dealing with. The local health boards and communities have been spoken with, our own health expert Wally has weighed in. The most important thing for parents to remember is hydrate, and you can't wait and tell your students, you can't wait till you're thirsty, you have to drink prior to that and continue to hydrate throughout the entire day. And the most, best advice we've received is loose clothing that covers most of your skin. Exposure of skin to the sun actually does contribute to overheating. So, last but not least, I just want to thank the board for your discussions today, and appreciate the opportunity for us to move forward. This was not the best situation, I will tell you that I never like, as a superintendent, a four-three vote. It's not what we look for, but it is the process sometimes that it comes to fruition by, and I think we should have more discussion about this. But I thank the board for the understanding, yes, some of these laws were passed late, and options were provided, but I thank the board for making the decision so our staff can continue to move ahead, and I will get you an update from the CEO of Focus regarding the project management and making sure that text wrapping is completed. So as soon as I have that information, I will pass it along. Those are my comments for this evening.
All right, thank you. Our next scheduled meeting is on Wednesday, August 16th.
The board attorney?
Oh, she had none.
Oh, sorry, I'm so sorry.
It's okay. Our next scheduled meeting is Wednesday, August 16th, there'll be a board workshop at 12:00 p.m. On Tuesday, August 22nd, there will be a board briefing at 1:00 p.m., followed by a board action meeting at 6:00 p.m. At this point, having no other business to come before this body, and see no objection, this meeting is adjourned, the time is 8:39 p.m.